Franklin County Board of County Commissioners, nine session. Commissioner Jones, would you leave some prayer and the pledge, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every one of our residents, all of our visitors. Father, we thank you for discretion and understanding that you're gonna impart to us today. Because we ask you, and you've said you were the whole no-good thing from your people that asked for it. Father, I thank you for touching today and helping us, God, to be, Lord, your stewards, not only for today, but for the future of Franklin County. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Flag the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic, from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and never be in justice for all.
Good morning. Next on the agenda will be approval of the minutes.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Next will be payment of the county bills.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously. Public comment. Public comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Gordon Hunter from District One. I just want to report from the Friends of the Airport that we are gonna have a group that's gonna join, a group called EAA, Experimental Aircraft Association. And what they do is they have a youth outreach program, which is really excellent. And we've got enough people to do that. At the last airshow we had last year, we had members of this group that came down from Tallahassee from their chapter. We're gonna create a chapter at the airport. And they, and their show we had last year, they gave rides to 63 young people ages 12 and up. 63 of our county youth were able to go flying to see what it was like and get an appreciation for that. We're gonna have an airshow scheduled for sometime in March. We hope to be able to do the same thing. But I just want to let you know that the Friends of the Airport is trying to do positive things with the airport, with the community. Even though we see areas that the airport can be improved in several ways, we are not an adversarial group. We want to do things right. We want to be reviewed as a group of people, aviators and supporters of the airport. They would like to see things go well. And I just leave you that report. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Karen Martin, Director of the Franklin County Humane Society. I just want to say a few things. 2019 has been a very, very challenging year for us. We have served a record number of animals this year. To date, we have intaken 673, which puts us on track for more than 800 intakes this year. Last year, the total was 697. So we're well on the way of serving over 100 more animals this year. These are pictures of some of the dogs and cats we took in in the month of September alone. The total is 73. We couldn't include all of the pictures because there's not enough room on the poster board. These are the faces of the Humane Society. We not only serve the homeless animals in Franklin County, but the people of this county as well. When someone finds a stray, has an owner surrender due to circumstances, or Animal Control needs to rehome their, the animals in their shelter, they call us for help. And that's what we do. We help. Can you imagine if we weren't here? These beautiful souls would be euthanized. Remember that Animal Control doesn't have an adoption aspect to it. The county would incur a huge expense if you tried to provide the kind of service we do. Your only alternative would be to kill them. The monies we receive from the county each year are necessary if we were to continue to care for and rehome all the pets that come through our doors. Please restore the funding for the critical work that we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bud Hayes, Franklin County Humane Society. About four meetings ago, and I was not here, this board passed a resolution authorizing Councilor Shula to sue the Humane Society. I guess, I don't know what he put in his budget, but I estimate it probably cost y'all $50,000, $75,000 to sue us for whatever type of relief y'all are gonna seek to ask. The next meeting, y'all determined to withhold our funding of about $36,000. So we have basically remained unfunded for the county funds that had been previously allocated. Just last Friday, and as an example of the Humane Society, y'all just saw Karen, we got a call from Animal Control, your agency. They had a series of dogs that they were gonna euthanize. Didn't have room to euthanize the animals. Karen went over there and picked up these five dogs. Y'all might require her previous testimony, her statement to you, that it cost us about $170, $200 per animal to vet the animals for adoption. So last Friday, we incurred about $1,000, up to $1,000 worth of cost. Y'all are still sitting on our funding. I'm not here to talk today about the merits of any roads, easements, passageways, driveways, whatever you want to call it. I'm here today to ask y'all to freeze up our money where we can continue the mission that we do so well. Everybody's acknowledged the Humane Society does a good job. We one of the few entities in this county that actually gives to the county and makes it successful. And we need our money. I'm asking you to reconsider your request, fund us where we can continue our good work. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
My name is Philip Kalaspe. I'm from East Point. My wife and I are volunteers and supporters of the Humane Society. The following is Humane Society's mission statement. Our mission is to relieve animal suffering, prevent animal cruelty, eliminate animal overpopulation, and promote humane education and enhance the human-to-animal bond. Removing their annual funding from the county budget indicates a shameful lack of compassion and appears to be a statement that the current county leadership doesn't care about any issue in that mission statement. The Humane Society provides critical services to this county. Show the citizens of Franklin County and to the visitors to our area that you are compassionate and supportive of the Humane Society by reinstating the funding immediately so they can continue their mission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Jimmerson from East Point. I've been in front of you before. My printer decided to take the day off, so I'm using my computer today. A few weeks ago, we met to discuss the Humane Society funding. Commissioner Parrish mentioned that you all felt the Humane Society had put you guys in a tough place by closing the drive to the gun range. Well, since, even before that meeting, that drive has been open and people have been freely using the space to practice. So it's now the Humane Society that finds itself in a tough place. Because as long as funding is held up, our existence is doubtful. Our Humane Society cannot function without county support. There's an ongoing pet overpopulation problem in this county that at times seems to be getting worse, not better. Excuse me. Well, just the other day, I was there at Animal Control when they dropped off five dogs. Some made a few health to our organization and also asked us to come over and evaluate some other dogs they weren't sure could be saved. If we have to close our doors, these animals and hundreds of more will be euthanized by Animal Control, who, by the way, don't want to be euthanizing animals at all. They always treat their best, try their best to get every adoptable animal into our care and don't want to be into the role of killing animals. So why not release the funds in the budget? I really don't understand what's going on. The taxpayers and your constituents overwhelmingly support and need the Humane Society. And having come to these meetings to beg you to release these funds is frustrating. Our issue ultimately is serving the people of Franklin County that rely on our services every day. People from all walks of life come through the Humane Society doors asking for help and assistance with their unwanted animals. We're as much a human services organization as we are an animal rescue. And finally, forget the staff that works tirelessly at the shelter. They should not have to be worried about having their jobs disappear. If you have concerns about how any money's spent, come to the shelter and see for yourself how every cent, every cent is put to use. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any more public comment?
I'm Karen Weir-Jimmerson. I spoke with you a couple weeks ago about refunding the animal shelter. I want to read something to you that is from the Florida Health website. This is an alert, a rabies alert, that was issued on 8/22 this year. The Florida Department of Health in Franklin County has issued a rabies alert for East Point in response to a raccoon that tested positive on October 21, 2019. A family pet was exposed to the raccoon on CC Land Road in the area between Whispering Pines and Tomahawk Circle. The recent rabies alert is standing for 60 days. So we're still under a rabies alert as far as this website indicates. So, why am I telling you this? I will go on to read from Florida Health website. An animal with rabies could infect other wild animals or domestic animals that have not been vaccinated against rabies. All domestic animals should be vaccinated against rabies and all wildlife contacts should be avoided, particularly with raccoons, bats, fox, gunks, otters, bobcats, and coyotes. So the other animals that we know that can get rabies are dogs and cats. And what the shelter does are a couple different things that help our public safety. The first thing they do is they bring feral animals, I mean, people in the community have a resource for bringing in feral animals, dumped animals, you know, animals that don't have homes. And we're talking dogs and cats, just our pets. They bring them into the shelter. Karen Martin addressed how many of these animals come into the shelter. You know, I don't want to even think about what would happen if there are a lot of animals in the woods running around, which is what happens, if there is no facility for someplace for these animals to be brought in and cared for. What will happen if we have more of a rabies problem? Now, you all know that somebody got bit in an establishment, in a business establishment, by a gray fox on Highway 98. Rabies make animals crazy. They will bite anything. So if there are feral animals or there are loose animals in the woods, there's gonna be a rabies problem. So, the CDC has solutions for rabies. One, pets have to be vaccinated. The shelter does that. They vaccinate all animals that come in. The CDC also recommends that animals be spayed so that there isn't an animal overpopulation. The shelter does that. They give vouchers for people so that they can have their animals spayed and neutered so that there isn't an overpopulation here. What I'm asking...
Time up, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Tracey Moses, Superintendent School Request.
I don't see Ms. Superintendent Moses here. And I checked with her assistant on Thursday, and she said she still was planning to come. Attorney Schuler, have you any word? No? I think it was about the reference to the road, sir.
We'll come back to it when you come in.
Okay, if I may, Chairman. In front of you today, you see a very long agenda. And I'll tell you, the good news is Alan Pierce doesn't have a report. The bad news is my report is seven pages long. And so, we have to, keeping in mind, we have a 1:30 workshop with LI and TMH that will be here. So I guess I'm trying to say in a very nice way, as nice as I possibly can, that we need to expedite this morning, move along as quickly as we can so we can be ready for the 1:30 workshop this afternoon. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next on the agenda will be Department Director's Report. Mr. Howard Nevel, Superintendent Public Work.
Good morning, Commissioner. How you doing? I've got nothing for the board at this time.
Anybody got anything for?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. How are we, some months ago, you reported that there was a change in the way state was allowing inmates or inmate labor to be used?
Yeah.
Or reduction, basically. How does that stand today? Is it still the same as it was?
I think two of my crews this morning had two inmates, which we usually get four. It's still, it's still the same. I get no state crews and some of the crews goes over there. I got five crews that goes over there, some might get two, three. Sometimes they get four, three, it all determines, so.
Okay.
But we're still very, very sheltered of inmates, so.
The reason I'm asking is knowing that we're on a, your department's based on a four-day work week?
Yes, sir.
And I'm not seeking to change how many hours you're working today, because I know there's a deal with inmates. But I'd really like for you to try to think of a way that we can move your crews to work in five days a week. If that meant you had a Monday crew and a Friday crew, and the people that work Friday are off Saturday, Sunday, Monday, people that work on Friday, you know what I mean?
Well, as of right now, we got 16 total that's working on the road department, which we got two that we need to hire, which will be 18. But if you take 16 on Monday and Friday, you're gonna have eight on Monday, which is basically what you call a skeleton crew. So you wouldn't be able to dig ditches or do nothing, need flagmen and different stuff like that, so.
So what we need to do is find a way that we can go to more days a week, because here's the problem we run into, especially in my district. There's a lot of unpaved roads, and if we have rain on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, you really can't do nothing with it, it's still wet. Then you got Thursday, Friday, and that's it. Well, I don't, I'm not wanting to or asking you to vacate what you need to do on whatever your schedule is.
Right.
Just to cover my district.
Right.
So I think we need to go to five days so we'd have more days available. So anyway, I'd like for you to try to think of a scenario that might work and bring it back to us, if that's all possible.
Okay. Lock it down.
Anybody got anything else for Superintendent? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Funny Davis, Solid Waste Director.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm gonna report here this morning. You should see attachment for the soccer schedule. I think Commissioner Parrish asked about a couple meetings back. Also, for us to solid waste, at the budget meetings, I mentioned to you all that the condition of the roll-off truck that pulled the boxes from the transfer station at the landfill. In the new budget year, there are funds available in tipping fee funds to replace this transfer station truck, which is currently not roadworthy and used only within the landfill perimeter. I'm asking the board to approve going out for bids for use of a roll-off truck, and the bid language is attached. You should see it. I have spoke with several dealers and believe we can get a used unit for around $30,000.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
And the next item I want to bring up to you that we mentioned in last meeting about the increase of the, a whole another tran, the household garbage. And you instructed me, Mr. Shula, and Mr. Richards to all meet together and see what we come up with. Mr. Shula has prepared a contract, so we just need the board's approval of the contract.
Second.
Wait a minute. Mr. Shula?
Yes, sir.
Everything in line on this one?
I think so, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I had Mr. Davis look into the factual basis for the increase and to compare what Mr. Richards proposed increases were and how they related to the industry standard with other companies and what they charged the county if they were to come down and provide the same or a similar service. And Mr. Davis has reported to me that what Mr. Richards is asking as an increase is not inconsistent with the industry standard for charges of this type. Is it an increase? Yes, it's an increase. Potentially, if it, if these overcharges reach their potential maximum, I mean, it could be as much as a $45,000 a year increase. But again, we have to pay what the market will bear. Mr. Richards, you know, is asking the county to pay what the market would bear and what the industry standard is. And I've also asked Mr. Davis to examine, and he may or may not be ready to address this issue now, but I have asked him, given the potential of this increase, to monitor the increased cost, because you set your budget before this increase request was received. And it may be that he needs to come back to you and request an increase in the tipping fees at the landfill to cover this unanticipated expense. But based on the information from the meeting that we had, and it was about an hour and 20-minute-long meeting at my office between myself, Mr. Davis, Mr. Richards, and his wife, and then the subsequent investigation by Mr. Davis into the industry standard for the charges, I have prepared a contract that he and I are recommending that the board accept and approve. It does have a six-month termination provision, so if, as we work through this new pricing structure, if it turns out that it is not beneficial to the public and the county, then we can terminate and go out for bid. But at this point, the recommendation is to approve the contract as submitted, based on the presentation by Mr. Davis on what the charges were at the last meeting.
All right. I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masses. Discussion. Mr. Davis, if, check out, see what it costs for the tipping fee. We might have to pass this on later.
Okay.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Then, for the record, Mr. Chairman, I've delivered the proposed new contract to Mr. Davis, and he's going to arrange getting it executed with Mr. Richards and return it back to the board.
Okay.
Okay.
Y'all will be, gotta take care of all that, right?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have for the board.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Davis?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't want on my report, and this is just an update. As an update, I spoke to representatives from both cities regarding the board's requests that they each contribute $3,500 to the animal control budget, and more importantly, have city police officers respond to animal control calls and determine if an animal control officer is needed. Both cities have set aside the funds and have requested additional time for the commissioners to meet for one last discussion on this matter. Anticipate a positive response from both cities by month's end. I've recommended that both city attorneys, contact Attorney Shula if there are any legal questions. So I just want to let you guys know they're working on it, they have the money set aside, and it's not, they won't meet specifically just for this. But as you know, City of Appalachia, their board, they're bringing a new, three new members there, so they want the opportunity to meet and just let them know what's going on and review the budget.
Okay, then both cities, right?
Yes, both cities.
All right, well, keep us informed, let us know.
Yeah.
What are they gonna say, yea, yea, nay?
I'm hoping by the next meeting, it's, our first meeting in November, it's a yea, and we're all good to go.
Okay. Keep up the good work, Mr. Davis.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody? Okay. Next on the agenda will be Ms. Pam Banera, Emergency Management.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have two action items for y'all this morning. The first one being the approval and signing of the Hurricane Loss Mitigation Grant in the amount of $194,000.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Masses, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Second thing is approval and signing of the modifications of Attachment E and Effective Date of the Emergency Management Preparedness Assistant Grant. You've already signed that.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass unanimously.
That's all I have.
Anybody got anything else for Ms. Banera?
You've got something for everybody.
I sure do. It's making my job so much fun. Item number two in my report, I'm sorry. Legislative funding request. Last year, last meeting, the board discussed items that should be submitted as legislative funding requests. Based on that discussion, the most important project is construction funding for a new emergency operations center. As the board is aware, Ms. Brunel has access to Florida Department of Emergency Management funding for the design of a new EOC, but no construction money. Franklin County is probably the only coastal county without a modern EOC. And Hurricane Michael proved that we are in desperate need of a larger EOC. This is the only funding request I'm planning to submit to our legislative delegation unless the board has additional projects for submission. As of Monday, I haven't received clear guidance of the county's to include any requests from both cities and from any constitutional officers, especially for ranking, you know. In the past, you know, we did it, then last year they said we didn't have to, then they changed it by the last minute. I'm trying to get a clear guidance from both Representative Schof and Senator Mumford on this deal.
But the cities and the constitutional office know about this, right?
Yes, because the sheriff, and when I say constitutional, the only one that's approached me is the sheriff, that he is working on sending up a legislative request, probably for the Drug Rehab Center, is what he told me. But I'm not sure if the fine center and a new representative wants us to include that in our ranking, or he's gonna accept those independently. And that's the only one, and I have to fill out that, I attached the application to, at the last meeting, so if you guys are good to go, I want to start working on that this week, because it's due November 1st.
Pleasure to the board.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Masses. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That pass unanimously.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I just want to say, I think it's really important to do what you're doing, and that is focus on what matters most and not cloud the whole legislative picture with so many requests. Focus on the matter most, and I think this is a good strategy.
Yeah, I think if we put all our eggs in this basket and push as best as we can, we should get some money to get this done.
Yep.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, when you're submitting this funding request, reference that we're getting some of the hurricane money from Ms. Pam to get this designed and engineered.
Yeah.
And we're gonna, we need to, we need to follow up with this request, and we need it funded so that after July 1, the next budget, we can begin construction.
Okay, good.
So let them know we're getting design and all done now.
Yes.
And this funding request to build that new EOC should be included in next year's budget, July 1. And they'll probably run it through the state EOC, but...
Good.
That's fine, but just reference that we're in process of getting engineered and design done presently.
I will, sir. I will.
That's the old building out there, what?
How old then?
Built 1976.
Done by...
Yeah, 50 years old, pretty close.
Yeah.
But I don't even believe they had no, they didn't have the code they have now. So you need to, we need to upgrade and keep people out of harm's way. Go ahead.
Okay, and that's it for me, except for one more thing, just to let you take a good look at Pam. You'll never see her at 34 again, she made 35 today.
No.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Anybody got anything else for? Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. Eric Love, Extension Office.
Good morning, Commissioners. I do not have anything extra for you today either.
Anybody got anything for Mr. Eric?
Just one thing. I was just real pleased to be at the ribbon-cutting ceremony earlier this past week for Representative Schof's office, and I was just happy to see that it's in the extension facility there in Bloodstown.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I thought that was just agriculturally, a good compliment to have all that.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I add something to that?
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, the, last Thursday and Friday, I had the pleasure of being at the Florida Association Counties ACC class for county commissioners. Dr. Nick Price, which I believe is the top dog as far as the IFIS goes, was one of our speakers. And, you know, just to make sure the public is aware, the UF IFIS is in all sixty-seven counties in the state of Florida. So thankful to be a partner with all that.
Thank you, we appreciate your participation in that.
Okay, keep up the good work, Mr. Eric.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the agenda will be Mr. John Solomon, T D C Administrator, Report.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm John Solomon, T D C Administrator. Collections report, the July two thousand nineteen collections were two hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and seven cents. It's about sixty-five hundred less than last year, about a negative three percent decrease, but with the increase we had in July, it more than makes up for that, so. Visitor center numbers, there's been, was twenty-five hundred and fifty visitors in the month of August, it should be September, sorry. The total for January, September, which is, so far, is thirty-one thousand, four hundred and five visitors. That is already above last year's numbers for two thousand eighteen, so we're doing very well this year with visitors to the area. The only action item I have on here is the approval of the visitor center annual contracts.
So moved. So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Parrish, second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioners. Informational, the Mayor Kevin Begos has assumed the seat for the City of Appalachia Color from former Mayor Van Johnson on the T D C board. He was sworn in on Tuesday, we had our meeting on Wednesday, so he went ahead and assumed that role. The board also approved Forgotten Coast Museum Series and Forgotten Coast Festival Series. The T D C board approved the development of these two series. They are three- to five-minute short videos featuring all of our area museums and parks. The festival series, which will feature three- to five-minute videos of annual events and festivals in Franklin County. These videos will be used in the newsletter, Facebook, webpage, YouTube channel, promotion for things to do in Franklin County. These videos will also be available for other entities to be able to use as well for promotion for their organizations and the county. Also, they approved the purchase of a key data dashboard software. This software will help streamline where, whom we advertise to. Using this software, we can see where our visitors are coming from, when they're booking, when they're booking for, in real time as they book their accommodations. This will really streamline where the T D C spends their advertising dollars, because we can actually see the results instantaneously and over a course of a period of time to know if that works or not. And if it doesn't, with those areas, we know we can adjust throughout the year, so it will help stretch the dollars further, so. And the only, the last thing is, the next scheduled board meeting is November thirteenth at two PM at the East Point Visitor Center.
Anybody got anything else for Mr. Solomon? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Hey, I just wanted to give kudos to Appalachia Color and Chamber of Commerce, because they won three awards at the Florida Association of Chamber Professionals. They won an award for public relations programs, for audiovisual online communications, and for communications and marketing for the Butts and Clucks Cook-Off Advertising Campaign. Because they handle your T D C, I just thought we should give kudos to John, doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Cooking good grocery, huh?
Mr. Chairman, can I say something before you get started? Just to let you guys know, John was bringing up this key data software, it was something that was in our budget, but it's something we think that's really gonna change the game for our T D C, so he would just bring it to you, make sure you're aware that the steps were taken. So it wasn't really the, you know, just informational, but I just want to, want you to understand kind of what the software was.
Okay. Anybody got anything else from Mr. Solomon?
I do, I'm sorry, me again.
Go ahead.
Yeah, like a bad penny. Alright, um, number three on my report. At your June eighteenth, eighteenth meeting, the board authorized the creation of a website strictly dedicated to Fort Coombs Armory. This website would automate the booking process with email notifications, would be mobile-friendly, have an availability calendar, and be ADA compliant. That says a lot. Along with other features to promote the armory as a wedding destination and as the county's convention center. With that in mind, the board directed T D C to include this project in their twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty budget. Since that budget was approved, I signed the agreement with the county's web designer to proceed with the creation of the armory website. So that's on the way, to let everybody know. Number four, Commissioners, the St. George Island Restroom Project. At your April second regular meeting, the board authorized using up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of T D C set-asides funds for the design, permitting, and construction document development for the St. George Island Restrooms Project. Dewberry and Associates have submitted the attached fee proposal for, excuse me, sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars for these services. At a future meeting, when Dewberry is in the final stages of the design, permitting, and construction documentation, the board will need to discuss construction funding. But I need approval and authorization with chairman's signature on that fee proposal for the St. George Island Restroom Project.
Pleasure to the board.
So moved.
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jones, second by two, Commissioner Parrish and, and Masto. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes unanimously.
And that's all I have, except to tell John you-
You barbecue, barbecue.
Had it this weekend.
Keep up the good work, Mr. Solomon.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Madam Quirk. Thank you, Michael. Have a great day.
Okay. Y'all set up already?
You go ahead.
Next on the agenda will be Ms. Amy Kelly, mode of adjustment report. You need time to set up, are you all ready?
It will just take me a minute for that to warm up.
Okay.
Good morning.
Well, let's take five while she's setting up. Take five while she's setting up.